Call to the second session of our fall special town meeting. You take your seats as quickly as possible and can the conversation, we do all appreciate First, another public service announcement. Brookline's Fourth Annual Climate Week runs from January 20th to January 26th, and please be alert to the activities of this great occasion. We have three articles on the agenda tonight, and then we will have completed the warrant. All of the articles are resolutions, and the first is Article 16. The main motion under Article 16 is on page 16-2, entitled "Motion to be offered by the petitioners," over to the middle of page 16-3. It's moved by Ms. Ames and seconded by Merrilise that the town adopt the following resolution, whereas the Human Relations Commission, et cetera, in the words of the resolution. A substitute motion is being offered by the Advisory Committee, and it's found on the -- on pages one and two of the orange supplement. Moved by Mr. Sandman, seconded by Mr. Boars. The -- excuse me, the Advisory Committee motion has been redlined against the petitioner's motion, and the principal and only substantive difference is in the last paragraph. Whereas the petitioner's motion calls for certain specific individuals to be appointed to the commission, the Advisory Committee motion simply asks, requests, that the selectmen go through the appointment process to appoint a full commission. Before we start the debate, I want to say a few words about the decorum of town meeting. This is the second time this subject matter has been before us. The first time last spring. And judging from our experience in town meeting last spring, and the conversations on the TMMA listserv and elsewhere, this is a very emotional issue in which a number of you have substantial emotions invested on one side or another of this issue. There's been -- there've been conversations about freedom of speech, and I want to say a few words about that. Any good First Amendment lawyer will tell you that freedom of speech is not absolute. There are public safety exceptions to untrammeled freedom of speech that are being played out currently in the abortion clinic litigation. And there are limitations on free speech in legislative bodies such as the town meeting. And we'll get to those in a moment. I also want to discuss for a moment the authority of the moderator in conducting our debate at town meeting. The statutory authority is found in sections, principally in Sections 15 and 17 of Chapter 39 of the General Laws, and I'll quote a couple of sentences from those sections. "The moderator shall preside and regulate the proceedings of town meeting and dedicate -- decide," beg your pardon, "all questions of order. No person shall address town meeting without leave of the moderator, and all persons shall, at the request of the moderator, be silent." Another source of the authority for the moderator's power is found in our bylaws, which incorporate by reference a volume of procedures entitled "Town Meeting Time," which makes quite explicit the powers of the moderator to control the decorum and dignity of town meeting and its These authorities have been supported by a long line of case law, most recently in a case involving the town meeting in the town of Egremont that was decided in the First Circuit Court of Appeals in Boston. In our town meeting, the moderator sets the rules of debate. My objectives are to maintain the respect -- a respectful attitude among town meeting members for each other and for citizens of the town, and to preserve the dignity of town meeting. I will not allow ad hominem attacks, disparagement, denigration of any person in town or elsewhere, and particularly any person in this town meeting. I will also not allow such attacks on any board or commission that's part of the government of our town, including the Board of Selectmen. Now, as this applies to the debate under Article 16, I expect and encourage speakers to criticize the Board of Selectmen, that's what Article 16 is all about, and will allow that criticism, and comments concerning the unfair impact of the actions or lack of action of the Board of Selectmen. However, I will not allow accusations of the Board or any particular selectman of racism, of discrimination, or any other unfair bias. This applies as well to the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. You may criticize the actions of the commission itself or its inactions, however, you may not accuse particular members of the commission of improper or abusive conduct. Now, we are not going to debate the limitations of constitutional free speech in the course of this debate. We are not going to debate the power and authority of the moderator and the limitations on that power and authority. We're going to debate Article 16. I hope that during this debate, you will bear in mind the remarks that I've made and take them to heart. Ms. Ames?
It's not easy for me to speak in public, to speak about race and often be rejected. I'm sure it's not easy for you either, but I do it because I have the conviction that our town needs a strong, trustworthy Human Relations Commission. The town's Human Relations Commission, tasked with addressing civil rights and race relations, has been the subject of a moratorium on appointments by the selectmen since April of this year. After three qualified people of color, Mr. Arthur Conquest, Cruz Sanabria, and Dwayne Tyndall submitted their applications. Two months before the moratorium in late January, the selectmen did not have any problem appointing a white gentleman as a commission member within two weeks. The disparity and the appearance of discrimination was brought to the attention of the selectmen in several occasions. While the considerations for these appointments were subject to the moratorium, the town administration promoted a staffer-to-administrator from the Health and Human Services Department to support the commission, and recently hired a new staff person at about $50,000 salary to support the new administrator and the commission. All these human resources and financial expenditures were made while the commission's responsibilities were deemed supposedly up in the air, and while, according to Town Council, the commission could not function because it lacked quorum. At the heart of Article 16 is our town's poor race relations, disregard of qualifications, and desperate treatment of people of color, lack of equal opportunity and access, complaints of discrimination that go unheard, and exclusion. You are in front of it right now. Our town's track record on race relations is very poor, but we are not able to support people of color who are not only qualified on paper, but have shown consistently their commitment and made valuable contributions to the commission's mission. They have been waiting now for almost eight months. Mr. Conquest, town meeting member for 18 years, is known to most of you. I, along with many people of color, proudly recognize his tireless advocacy for social and racial justice, educational equity, diversity, and inclusion. All of these are areas of concern to the Human Relations Commission. Thanks in great part to Mr. Conquest, the town has benefited in the creation of the Brookline Youth Fund endowed by the Country Club with half a million dollars back in 1999, when he actively brought the issue of diversity to the Country Club. Mr. Conquest started a program many years ago that some credit as being the first steps-to-success program. And Mr. Sanabria, who was interviewed in March, has shown an enviable commitment to the commission's work, bringing his expertise of human relations management, understanding students' and veterans' perspectives. He has attended more meetings in the past 14 months than several appointed members. Mr. Dwayne Tyndall works for Boston Fair Housing. It is my understanding that he's still waiting to hear from the selectmen about his application. We have a serious lack of diversity in the upper levels of the town's workforce, and it is not because of a lack of qualified applicants. The fact that in the last 40 years, we have not hired or promoted a single black, Latino, or Asian, or Native American as head of any of the 26 departments is a clear sign of systematic and institutional exclusion of people of color. Both candidates for mayor of Boston, two weeks ago, openly talked about institutional racism, and as painful as it is, I think our town is not exempt. And I wonder how we expect to improve our diversity and inclusion in our workforce when we choose not to support qualified people of color willing to lend their time and expertise on a volunteer basis. I am well aware that racism exists not only in Brookline, and we may not be able to change much about it on a grand scale, but when we become aware of the facts in our own realm and do nothing, 40 years of zero persons of color at the level of department heads, we contribute not only to perpetuating a perverse conduct, but also blessing its institutionalization. We can do something about it. Let's have the courage to not hide in legal or procedural arguments and do what is right. Some may think the fact that interviews have started in the past two weeks render Article 16 moot. That is not the case. The purpose of the resolution is not to tell the selectmen to do their job, that is already in the bylaws, and it is their duty. The purpose of the resolution is to set the direction we'd like our community to follow, to point the road of inclusion, and to be open to the diversity the world around us is going through. I ask that you vote no on the Advisory Committee's motion and support the petitioner's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Sanabria. And I need to make one correction. On the Advisory Committee motion, Mr. Sandman is not -- Sandman is not a town meeting member and therefore has no right or power to make a motion before you, and the motion was moved by Carla Benca and seconded by Mr. Boars. Mr. Sanabria?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Cruz Sanabria, and I live in Precinct 5, and I'm here to speak in favor of Warren Article 16. I am one of the applicants who volunteered to join the Human Relations Youth Resource Commission. I have been involved in meetings for over a year. I grew up poor in Spanish Harlem with one parent, two brothers, and five sisters. I have always wanted to go to college, but the only way that was going to happen was if I joined the Marine Corps and went to Vietnam, and go to Vietnam. I sustained gunshot wounds in combat on my left arm with nerve, muscle, and bone loss. I am a disabled veteran. I was also one of 167 Vietnam veterans who lobbied Congress for a week and marched in Washington, D.C. in 1971 with former Senator and now Secretary of State John Curry. For the last 14 years, I have taught in the Boston Public Schools as an elementary teacher. My three children are the product of Brookline's school system. I have a master's degree in education from Leslie University with 75 graduate credits on top of that. In the past, there has never been, from my understanding, any real problem on pointing anyone to volunteer in this non-paying position for the Human Relations Youth Resource Commission. That being said, why are the selectmen now changing the rules? Why didn't they change them five, three, or two years ago? The real question is why now? Why is it that since March, I have been denied this opportunity and have been told on numerous occasions that the rules have to be changed before allowing anyone else into the commission? One of the considerations that was floating around was that a person might need a master's degree in human relations. This position is to help in advocating and promoting the best possible candidate to work, to help prove, improve our race relations, to help educate our community on inclusion, to gain trust, and to get away from exclusion. In essence, for the town of Brookline to become part of the big picture in this country. I am Baliano, and I have been told stories of mistreatment that have occurred in this town to others. I understand the frustration, since I also have been mistreated too. My youngest daughter received a comment just last June as a junior in this school that was unbecoming of a teacher. My daughter said, with a witness there, that she was going to visit some of her family abroad. So the teacher said, and I quote, "To bring drugs back?" Such insensitive comments has no place in our school system or anywhere else in Brookline. The whole thing is particularly puzzling to me, especially during these times when a mayor was elected in Newton, a governor in Massachusetts, and a president in this country. I see a need for a commission to improve our cultural competency across the town. And finally, as Charles M. Blow wrote this Saturday on the op-ed of the New York Times, and I quote, "Racism is a virus that is growing clever at avoiding detection. Race consciousness is real. Racial assumptions and prejudices are real, and racism is real. But these realities can operate without articulation and beneath awareness." For those reasons, some can see racism where it is absent, and others can willfully ignore any possibility that it could ever be present. That is exactly what has happened here in this so-called liberal, rich, educated town called Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mike Sandman, speaking for the Advisory Committee. I'm an at-large member. Article 16 is a non-binding resolution urging the selectmen to fill open seats on the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. Whatever you may think about discrimination in Brookline, and I personally agree that it certainly exists, the article is really very straightforward. It has two elements. The first element is, as it's submitted by the petitioners, the first element urged that the selectmen appoint enough people to the commission so that it can gather a quorum, which is certainly more than a reasonable request. Part two, the second element, asks town meeting to endorse three specific applicants for seats on the commission. In contrast, the Advisory Committee recommends that all open seats on the commission be filled by May 2014, and that the selectmen should include residents from diverse backgrounds. The only substantive but very important difference between the petitioner's language and the vision recommended by the Advisory Committee is that the Advisory Committee does not think town meeting should be choosing specific people to serve on a commission. That is the selectmen's job, as Mariela Ames has correctly pointed out, and the Advisory Committee wants them to do that job. The Human Relations Youth Resources Commission was created in 1970. Since 1970, our view of what constitutes a disadvantaged minority has expanded substantially, and some of the responsibilities assigned to the commission in 1970 have been taken over by other departments. In May 2013, town meeting asked for a report on whether and how the staff support and underlying bylaw governing the commission should be revised. The Selectmen's Committee on Diversity was appointed to make that recommendation by May 2014's town meeting. The bylaw that committed the commission calls for 15 members. In April 2012, there were 12 members. In January 2013, the selectmen decided not to fill open positions on the commission because the role and perhaps the size of the commission seemed likely to change once town meeting received the Selectmen's Committee's report. Then, over a surprisingly short time, there was a series of resignations, leaving only seven active members on the commission today, so the commission's been unable to function due to lack of a quorum. Discrimination against minorities may not be as obvious or blatant as it was in 1970, but it still exists, and the commission still has very important work to do. To do that work, at a minimum, the commission needs a quorum. Ideally, it should have members who can represent all of the groups protected by state law, including women, gays and lesbians, the disabled, immigrants, Asians, Latinos, and African-Americans. The selectmen who spoke at the Advisory Committee's hearings on Article 16 emphasized that they did not intend to leave the commission unable to operate. They were surprised by the multiple resignations that created the current situation. They expressed concern that they might have difficulty finding enough applicants to fill all of the open positions on the commission, given that its future composition and mission have not been settled. As of late October, there were seven or more, perhaps by now, applicants for positions on the commission, the three whose appointments the petitioners seek, and four others who, I understand, applied after Article 16 was drafted. Twenty-four of the 25 members of the Advisory Committee who were present voted against recommending that specific people be appointed to the commission. It would set a precedent of encroaching on the selectmen's authority and on their responsibilities. Further, town meeting has no mechanism to vet the applicants. The Advisory Committee thinks that the selectmen should exercise their authority and should fulfill their responsibility by bringing the commission up to full strength, and that they should seek diversity in its new appointees. We want to see the commission get back to work, just as the petitioners do, and we believe that the Advisory Committee's version of Article 16 sends the selectmen a proper message that they should do their job without giving that job to either town meeting or to the petitioners. Thank you.
I haven't started yet, I have to get my glasses, sorry.
I'll start over.
Good evening. Arthur Conquest, town meeting member, Precinct 6. I am speaking in support of the main motion of Warren Article 16 and against the amendment being offered by the Advisory Committee. The one major difference between Article 16 and the amendment being offered, in my estimation, is the elimination of the reference to the subject of race. James Carville, the nationally-known political consultant, told former President Bill Clinton during his first run for higher office in 1993, and I quote, "It's the economy, stupid," unquote. Ladies and gentlemen, Warren Article 16 is about race. Racism is America's first sin, and we as a nation don't want to discuss it, not even the first black president unless he's forced to do so. This country has committed crimes against humanity when Columbus first encountered the naked, full-of-wonder Arawaks in 1492, and we continue to this day with the new Jim Crow catastrophe, which is the mass incarceration of some 3 million men and women, a disproportionate of whom are black and Latino. In Brookline, and in Brookline, we don't want to touch the subject of race and have really done so since 1969, some 43 years ago, when the Human Relations Youth Resource Commission was formed, even though that was the cornerstone of its charter, which is exactly why there are 25 white department heads operating the town. There is no question in my mind, had there been no Article 16, there wouldn't have been the interviews of applicants that have taken place over the past two weeks by the Board of Selectmen, especially since I applied to be a member on the commission on the 4th of April, the anniversary of the assassination of Dr. King. The fact that I'm not a company man, or also better known as a house servant, threw a one-pound box of sugar in the committee's gas tank pipeline. All of a sudden, there was the moratorium on appointments using some specious justification of halting appointments. But the moratorium didn't prevent the Board of Selectmen from hiring a $50,000 or $60,000 staff person for the commission while never mentioning it as -- mentioning it to many -- to any of the commissioners, only after the fact. I constantly hear whites in this community announce that they did this during the Civil Rights Movement, they attended the march on Washington, and they met with Dr. King, that they were committed to social justice and so on. There's not one black or Latino or Asian department head at Brookline High School. There's not one black or Latino elected official in town. I lifted the following quote from a story in Sunday's Boston Globe, quote, "While there are not any people of color serving as department heads, the town has succeeded in hiring women for leadership jobs in recent years that have always been held by white men." And what about black and Latino women?
One minute, sir.
This is not the mutual -- this is not the Mutual Aberration Society, but Brooks Ames and Mariela Ames have done more for civil rights and social justice in Brookline than anyone I've encountered or heard about in the last 30 years I've lived here. And that's saying a bunch coming from me. Yet they're constantly being vilified and marginalized, even by the folks who call themselves progressive. They not only talk the talk, but they also do the walking as well. They badgered me to submit an application to join the commission.
Thirty seconds.
I don't like being around sick people, so I have refused invitations from Mariela to join time, and again previously. She deserves to be Brookline or PAX's Woman of the Year. You have a choice tonight to keep the town of Brookline in the thirties of racial isolation and backwardness, à la South Boston circa 1970, by voting for the Advisory Committee's amendment, or you can chart a new course and vote for the main motion of Article 16. The only difference between the two is recognizing the fact that black and Latino and Asian people exist as capable and functioning human beings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conquest. My personal thanks for your dignified presentation.
Nancy Daley.
Nancy Daley for the Board of Selectmen. I want to say first that there has been a great deal of name-calling and charges of racism in connection with this warrant article that are both offensive and untrue. I cannot recall this level of recuperation and specific personal attacks on any other issue in my years of involvement in town government. A number of people have described it to me as they feel as though they're being bullied. I can say that I have sat on several of the search committees, that the town, for the town administrator and some of the department heads, over the past several years, and I can categorically state that no applicant has been treated unfairly or with prejudice due to their race, ethnicity, or sexual orientation, et cetera. However, contrary to what one earlier speaker said, we have had very few minority applicants apply for our jobs. Do we need to do a more aggressive outreach to get a more diverse pool of applicants? Absolutely. I know the Human Resources Director has already begun this work. The town administrator has also worked hard to make recent search committees more diverse, hoping to attract more candidates that way. In addition, the Selectments Committee on Diversity, Inclusion, and Affirmative Action has had some very interesting discussions on this topic, and will include specific suggestions in our report to promote this effort. This will likely necessitate allocating more of our scarce resources to the effort, but I think it's worth it. We have also had some irresponsible allegations about specific employee matters. Unfortunately, this is one area in which we cannot be transparent. We have to respect the privacy rights of our employees and applicants, and therefore usually we cannot tell the other side of the story as to employee disciplinary matters or reasons that a specific person was not hired. However, I can say that all of us on the board take such, any complaints about discrimination or related matters very seriously indeed, and we work hard to reach a fair and appropriate outcome on such matters. The, as many untrue and unfair allegations of racism in Brookline are having the effect of driving people away, I was recently working with our health department to try and help an elderly woman who was being evicted from her senior housing in Brookline. Although she was in dire straits, she insisted that she did not want to continue living in Brookline because she is African-American, and she had read in the paper that Brookline was a racist place. This limited our ability to help her. Recently, Mr. Klechner commented to me that he thought all these unfounded racism charges were going to make it very hard to increase recruiting of minority applicants for Brookline jobs. Should the efforts of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission be directed toward making the town seem completely unwelcoming to minorities who might consider working or living here, I would suggest that their efforts should be directed toward building, not destroying. That brings me to the petitioner's resolution. The Board of Selectmen takes its responsibility to make appointments very seriously. We interview candidates, we consider complaints we might have received about specific candidates, and we look at how they have been or might in the future interact with the public and town staff in order to accomplish the goals of a specific board or commission. This appointing authority is appropriate, appropriately in executive function, and has been designated to the board. About a year and a half ago, we started looking at the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. Not only was Stephen Bressler planning on retiring, but it was clear that the bylaw was seriously out of date. Some of the responsibilities that were in the 40-year-old bylaw had in fact been given to other departments, but the bylaw never updated to reflect that. The Selectmen set up the Diversity, Inclusion, and Affirmative Action Committee to review that bylaw and suggest an updated version and to look at related matters.
One minute.
Town Meeting referred the subject of a Warren article last spring to that committee. We're making substantial progress and hope to have a new, we anticipate having a new bylaw for the spring Town Meeting. When we decided to halt appointments to the Human Relations Commission, they had a quorum at that time. Unfortunately, the resignations kept rolling in.
Three seconds.
Okay, eight members have resigned in the past year and a half, including the minority members that were on there, and it's clear there's something drastically wrong with the dynamics of the commission. But we do understand they need a quorum. We have begun interviewing candidates again, and we will make some appointments in the near future. The Board of Selectmen strongly objects to the petitioner's version of the resolution. However, we don't have any serious objections to the Advisory Committee version.
Thank you. Marilis?
Good evening. I'm Marilis from Precinct 6. Actually, I had hoped that this resolution would have become moot by Town Meeting, but the job still hasn't been done. I attended and spoke in favor of this article at the Advisory Committee's Subcommittee Public Hearing. I understood some of that committee's concerns, including the fact that the article refers specifically to three individuals. I was even prepared to be open to proposed amendments, but when I read their amended version, I was appalled. The version goes way beyond amending the article. It emasculates the commission. There are two principles embedded in the article. First, the importance of developing and nurturing diversity at all levels of town activity, most relevantly on the Human Relations and Youth Services Commission. Second, the need for basic courtesy to qualified applicants, our neighbors, who have been kept in a state of limbo for much of the year, thus crippling the commission. I fail to understand the controversy swirling around these principles. Here's what disappoints me about the amended version. While there is tepid support for appointing more commissioners, the committee has eliminated any reference to the commission's responsibilities. They can't even live with the simple description, quote, "Charged with advancing civil rights and race relations." Why appoint commissioners to a commission whose responsibility is prematurely eviscerated? Further, their version overemphasizes that appointed and reappointed commissioners are lame ducks, implying they can't really function effectively. How demeaning is that? Last spring, Oprah Winfrey was the speaker at the Harvard commencement. She emphasized that people do not want divisiveness and conflict, that people simply seek respect and recognition. I believe respect and recognition are what this article is about. It respects our town's processes and procedures, the applicants who are willing to serve, and the commission's stated purpose. So it's been really disappointing to observe many people's negative responses to the people of color who are simply trying to be heard and want their firsthand experiences to be recognized. Yes, it can be painful to hear that our community falls short, far short, of being an ideal, safe place for people of color. How naive it is to think that Brookline is an ideal bubble in an otherwise troubled society, or to think the original purpose of the commission has outlived its need. Why attack the messengers, treating them like untouchables because their message is disturbing? Let's welcome these uncomfortable facts, listen to voices unlike our own, and see this as an opportunity to be creative in solving this haunting need. Many people in Brookline have worked very hard during the campaigns to get President Obama and Governor Patrick re-elected. It's time for that kind of energy and enthusiasm to be focused on getting people of color represented, respected, and recognized in the town's daily life and employment practices. This resolution, which is so non-committal as to be non-binding, is a tiny step toward that goal. If you vote for the amended version, you are sending a wrong message, not only to the Select Board, but also to the whole town, and believe me, we are being watched without the help of security cameras. You would be saying that all deliberate speed has been and is good enough, that our town has more important priorities than human rights. Please don't do that. Please find enough compassion in your heart to support the people of color who care enough about our town and have the courage to put themselves on the firing line, as the three proponents preceding me have done. You have the opportunity to set a tone tonight. Make it the right one, for the sake of everyone who lives here. Reject the amended version. Vote for the original. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we have completed the speaker list. Yes, Ms. Connors. Anyone else who wishes to comment, and please come to a microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia Connors, Precinct 3. Mr. Moderator, I wish to quote from Article 3.14, which is the Human Relations Youth Resources Bylaw. It says that "In the event of the death or resignation of any member, his successor shall be appointed to serve the unexpired period of the term for which such member has been appointed." And yet, as you've heard, there are several vacancies on the Human Relations Youth Resources In fact, you've heard that the Selectmen declared an affirmative moratorium on filling the vacancies on the commission. My question, Mr. Moderator, is are the selectmen required to follow the law, just like the rest of us? And also, I'd like to ask if Acting Town Council has advised the selectmen to fill the vacancies as soon as possible?
Well, Ms. Connors, I think the advice that Town Council gives to the Board of Selectmen is, is not something that, unless the advice was given in an open, in an open meeting. But why don't we let Town Council respond? Ms. Connors had two questions, one concerning the, the effect of the bylaw concerning the filling of vacancies, and the second concerning your advice to the selectmen if you gave it in open meeting.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Murphy. I'm Acting Town Council, and it's my privilege--
Please, speaking at a microphone.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Murphy, Acting Town Council. It's my privilege to be here tonight. I do not read the language in the bylaw to compel the selectmen to make appointments, and I have not so advised them.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Cornelia Vanderzeal, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 15. I'd like to point out a few facts here that the commission, the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission, has not had a quorum since its January meeting, so it has been unable to conduct any business. And even though maybe it had eight members or more, it's always hard to get everybody to show up to a meeting. I'd like to address something else about specifying certain candidates. There's an urgent need for these appointments. These people came forward in March and April, and I think they, their, their action on their application is long overdue. I'd also like to point out that we do have a commission for women and a commission for the disabled, for those who are concerned about narrowing the scope of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission's work. The three applicants of color in question were and are aware of potential changes to the commission's responsibilities. Race relations will continue to be a main component of any new responsibilities for the commission, I would hope. If other areas of expertise were or are needed, there have been at least three additional vacancies in the past four months. I think there are eight vacancies total now, but I could have that number wrong. Article 16 doesn't preclude the appointment of other qualified candidates. The Advisory Commission recommendation removes the issue of race and focuses on quorum and precedence, and urges the selectmen to do what the bylaws already tell them to do. Therefore, in concert with what Marilis said, I think you should reject the Advisory Committee's amendment or petition, I don't know which it's called, and support Article 16 as it is written by the petitioners. Thank you.
It's an amendment and also a substitute motion. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Davis, Precinct 10. I have a question for the Advisory Committee in the explanation of the, that was given orally here for the Advisory Committee's amendment. It was said that the, that the Advisory Committee's amendment differed from the main motion because the main motion seeks to appoint committee members. Is that really true? Does, 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 is that, does the main motion seek, does the main motion actually appoint new commission members? Or is that an overstatement by the person who was explaining the amendment by the Advisory Committee?
Mr. Davis, as you well know, and you've heard from prior speakers, this is, these are resolutions. Town Meeting has no power to require the selectmen to act, no power to require the selectmen to appoint certain persons, and these resolutions simply urge or request the selectmen to do this. Thank you. Mr. Van Schooyck?
Yes, John Van Schooyck, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. I'm going to presume to ask some questions out loud of no one in particular and of all of us.
Well, you're asking one of me, and I'll give an answer for it if I can.
Yes, through the moderator. I had the pleasure of serving on the Adult Ed Advisory Board with Arthur Conquest. I've always felt as though he is a person of goodwill. I've had the pleasure of working with many of the Advisory Committee members and the selectmen. I've always felt that they are people of goodwill. When I see, as I seem to see tonight, a sort of divisiveness taking root, it concerns me, it worries me. I'm, I think as all of us are, I'm profoundly sorry that this has come to this. I'm not sure how it has come to this. The questions I'd like to just sort of ask people to think about really get to the heart of, will passing this article help or hurt? And I ask myself the question, what are we presuming to do here? And let's, let's, let's accept that even though it's a resolution and it's non-binding and it does not necessarily have any binding effect, we should treat it as though it, as though it did. I mean, if we, if we think it's the right thing to do, we should vote for it. If we think it's the wrong thing to do, we should vote against it, but we shouldn't say, well, even though I think it's the wrong thing to do, because it's not going to have any effect, you know, maybe I'll send a message by going along with voting for it. I just don't buy that. I'm sorry. So let's treat it like it was going to have effect and ask ourselves, is it the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do? Is it going to help or is it going to hurt? Well, first of all, what are we doing? Are we suggesting that Town Meeting henceforth should be a party to appointing members of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission? Then shouldn't someone introduce an article that says, henceforth, Town Meeting shall have appointment power for three of the members of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission? If we don't clearly define this, then does it begin and end here? Is it just these three? Or when three more really qualified people come along and say, you know, I'm a good person and I'm qualified and my, my application hasn't been acted on by the selectmen, are we going to take up their cause too, and the next group, and the next group, and the next group? What exactly do we presume to do here? And if we, if we want to presume the authority in the future of appointing members to this commission, how many? And then, what is our process? Would we, would we appoint the three people who came along first and said, we're all good people and we're earnest and we want these positions? Or would we then set up a process and we'd say, well, who else is out there? What are their qualifications? How do we weigh them? How do we compare them? You know, I think we know the answer to that question. We would not just do this on an ad hoc basis. So, so that's one question that I have in mind. And a second question is, if there were--
That was only one?
That was one. One big one. And I promise there'll only be one more. If there were people who, through this action on Article 16, were named to this commission, does that help or hurt that commission to work smoothly together? Or does it create a situation in which one group of people sitting on the commission sort of know that some other members of the commission are there because they-- sort of know that some other members of the commission are there because they went to Town Meeting to get appointed? Should they be affected by how they came to the commission? How they got appointed to the commission? Is it going to immediately sort of create two classes of people on this commission? It doesn’t feel right. It doesn’t feel like a helpful thing to do, and I think that some of the rhetoric tonight—I’m sorry to say—has not been helpful in making it seem as though this is a test of purity as to whether a person is a person of goodwill and feels strongly about racism or doesn’t. I’m sorry. I think people can vote for the Advisory Committee amendment and still be people of goodwill. Thank you.
Mr. Burstein?
Thank you. Michael A. Burstein, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12. I’m also actually a member of the Elected Board of Library Trustees. I have one question, which I hesitate to ask, because I’m embarrassed by my lack of knowledge on the subject. Twice it was brought up during the discussion that we have, I think, 26 department heads, all of whom are white at the moment in town. And I’m actually just curious, historically, who and when was the last non-white department
Mr. Kluckner? Yes. Just— if you confine yourself to answering the question, Mr. Conquest?
Say that again?
Confine yourself to answering the question.
There has only been one black male who has headed the— and he headed the Human Relations Youth Resource Commission, and I think it was 1969. He lasted one year, and that was the one and only black department head in the history of the town.
And that’s considered department head, the head of that commission?
Well, Steve Bressler was.
Okay.
Yeah, Steve Bressler succeeded him, I believe.
Okay, so that’s all the information?
Yep.
Okay. If there’s any other information out there, I’d appreciate it being sent around after Town Meeting. Thank you.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Hi. John Harris, Precinct 8. Just a question that I would hope the moderator would refer to, either long-serving members of the Town Meeting or historically-minded members. In the history of Town Meeting, have there been cases in the past where Town Meeting has been asked to act on the appointment or hiring of particular individuals?
Not to my recollection. But, you know, there’s nothing mysterious about what’s going on here. We have resolutions before us on a fairly regular basis in which Town Meeting asks, requests, urges the selectmen to take action that Town Meeting doesn’t have the power to take itself. So I don’t think there’s anything particularly mysterious about asking the selectmen to appoint particular people to this commission. It may be philosophically difficult for some of you, but it’s certainly not out of order. Now, seeing no one else at the microphones, we will proceed as follows. The Advisory Committee’s motion is an amendment or substitute motion. We will vote on it accordingly, in accordance with our parliamentary procedures. We will vote on it first. If the Advisory Committee motion passes, that will become the main motion, and we’ll have another vote on exactly that motion as the main motion. If the Advisory Committee motion fails, we will then vote on the petitioner’s motion on Page 16-2. Is there any question about that procedure? Mr. Carroll? I know what you’re—
[laughter]
Yes, if there are 35 people who would like a recorded vote on the first motion before us, which is that of the Advisory Committee, we will have an electronic vote. And there certainly are 35. So, this is Article 16 AC motion, AC substitute motion. And while our IT friends are rigging the system here, I remind you that the only buttons on this device that work are the numbers numbered 1, 2, and 3. 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 for abstain. And you will know that your vote has been recorded if this red box lights up. Whenever you’re ready to start the con. It’s on the Advisory Committee’s motion on the orange supplement. All right? All those in favor of the Advisory Committee motion, please stand and press 1. Thank you. You may be seated. The Advisory Committee motion passes by a vote of 124 in favor, 63 against, and 7 abstentions. We will now vote on the Advisory Committee motion as the main motion. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Keep your hands up, please. Motion carries by a vote of 183 to 15. And by the way, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the high quality and tone and decorum of the debate on Article 16. I think you’re all to be commended, and particularly the speakers. Article 17. Motion under Article 17 is on the—I guess—the rose-colored supplement, Page 1. Moved by Mr. Farlow, seconded by Mr. Bassett, that the town adopt the following resolution relating to the Syrian conflict, in the words of the motion. And there’s some—the rose-colored supplement simply sets forth the article which has to be changed to some extent so that it becomes a motion. So in the first line, instead of—to see if the town will adopt—should read “Moved that the town adopt the following resolution.” And at the end of the resolution, strike the words or act on anything relative thereto. It’s moved by Mr. Farlow, seconded by Mr. Bassett. Mr. Farlow and Mr. Bassett, you have eight minutes. An aggregate of eight minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name’s Frank Farlow, and I’m a Precinct 4 Town Meeting Member. This article is a citizen petition brought forward by John Bassett, David Clafter, Mary Lee, and myself. When we submitted it six weeks ago, the Obama Administration had just begun a concerted campaign to persuade Congress to authorize its plan to attack Syria to destroy the government’s chemical weapons. Such an attack would have been both unilateral and in violation of international law, and its wide-ranging consequences in the turbulent Middle East couldn’t be predicted by anyone with any degree of certainty. The situation was fluid, so we intended to revise the resolution as necessary prior to Town Meeting, depending on what had happened in the Mideast in the meantime. If an attack had occurred by tonight, we hoped that Town Meeting would state its opposition and urge an immediate shift to a diplomatic course. But that’s behind us now. Our revised resolution, which begins on Page 1 of the pink supplement, now looks a lot different from the original on Page 17-1. That’s primarily because the Administration hasn’t launched an attack due to the promising diplomatic initiatives concerning both Syria and Iran. Also, though, it’s because the petitioners accepted most of the recommendations made by the selectmen and by the Advisory Committee during their hearings on this article. The number of whereas clauses has been reduced from 13 to 5. You can see the deletions on Page 17-4. Also, in the main resolved clause, the following words have been deleted from the original: “to eliminate the government’s chemical weapons.” So it now reads, “Resolved: The Town Meeting commends the Obama Administration for choosing diplomacy and negotiations to resolve the Syrian conflict, and urges it to continue vigorously pursuing this course instead of carrying out a unilateral attack as originally proposed. The selectmen unanimously support this proposal. The Advisory Committee narrowly voted to recommend no action. However, the Advisory Committee had previously decided by a 15 to 6 vote to offer an amended version of our original wording that was very similar to the revised resolution that’s before you tonight. Our resolution now differs from the Advisory Committee’s earlier amendment in just two places. First, it retains what now appears as the third whereas clause, whereas the Advisory Committee omitted that whereas clause. We feel that it’s important to underline that not even the wealthiest countries in the world can afford to carry on multiple military interventions abroad while meeting the needs of their citizens at home. Second, the resolution retains the reference in the main resolved clause to refraining from a unilateral attack. We can certainly hope for the best concerning diplomatic resolution of the chemical weapons issue, but it’s important for Town Meeting to emphasize at the same time that the current diplomatic approach must remain concerted and persistent rather than resorting to violence going forward. Together with the Board of Selectmen out of Brookline Pacts, we urge you to vote yes for Article 17. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett, Mr. Farlow has left you three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Bassett, Precinct 6. When we submitted this resolution—it was in August—we were hearing war weariness from all over the country, from all parts of the political spectrum. We were being reassured by public officials, including Secretary of State Kerry, that there would be no boots on the ground. We were reading about Russian air defenses that the Syrian government has. What we were—what I was seeing in the paper were guesses that our unilateral military action might be shooting hundreds of 20-year-old Tomahawk missiles at Syria from the Mediterranean as if that would do anything besides kill a lot of people, destroy a lot of buildings, and create more refugees. The possibility seemed to be, at best, ineffective and, at worst, ridiculous and destructive. So that’s where this resolution comes from. We joined—in submitting this resolution—a national murmur, a national feeling of not taking unilateral military action. And the results have been, I think, better than I expected. The Syrian government has promised to turn over its chemical weapons for destruction by next year. That remains to be worked out, but that is real progress. There are also negotiations with Iran, which might not have happened had we gone into another war in that part of the world. The last 10 words, as Frank has mentioned, of the resolution, “Instead of carrying out a unilateral attack as originally proposed,” are absolutely key to this resolution. It is a preference for a policy of negotiation as opposed to unilateral military action.
One minute.
There are—thank you. There are still those in our government and in other governments in the world who want us to take military action. Our opinion still matters, and I urge you to support Article 17 as petitioned to reinforce the policy that negotiations are more productive and preferable to unilateral military action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I’m Bobby Nabel, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 11, speaking in behalf of the Advisory Since there’s been a significant change in the Advisory Committee’s recommendation for the warrant article printed in the original mailing of the combined reports and the one that appeared in the supplementary report, this is an explanation of how that change came about. When the resolution was originally submitted, it was not clear whether the United States might initiate a military attack against Syria. And as originally drafted, the resolution set forth many reasons for opposing military action, and, among other things, supported pursuit of a negotiated solution through diplomacy. By the time the resolution was heard and discussed by the Advisory Committee, military action no longer seemed imminent, and after discussion revealed a wide variety of views, including the view by some that the committee should not offer a recommendation to Town Meeting on something that is primarily a matter of individual conscience. The committee voted in support of a much-reduced substitute resolution from which, among other things, the references relating to military action had been removed. When warrant Article 17 proponents later presented a revised version of their earlier resolution, the Advisory Committee voted to reconsider its earlier vote, allowing it to take up and discuss afresh the redrafted proposal. This discussion revealed a nearly equally divided committee, with some supporting the revised warrant article and the message it transmits to elected officials, and with others questioning the need or appropriateness for such an article, particularly since the threat of unilateral military action seems to have dissipated. Thus, the committee, by a vote of 8 in favor and 10 opposed, recommended no action.
Thank you, Ms. Daly.
Nancy Daly for the Board of Selectmen. I think we can all agree that a negotiated resolution of the chemical weapons situation in Syria is the best way to go. Several members of the board were concerned, however, about the original language of the petitioner’s resolution, which seemed to suggest that the U.S. should never act alone. While when one vote on the Security Council can derail an effort to stop a regime that is systematically committing genocide against some of its people, we felt that there were times when we might want our country to act even if it were acting alone. The petitioners responded to our concerns and adjusted the language in the resolution, and therefore, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends favorable action on the resolution as it appears on Page 1 of the pink supplement. as it appears on page one of the pink supplement.
Thank you, Mr. Gladstone. And Merrilis, would you come forward, please?
Scott Gladstone of Precinct Sixteen. While I support the actual resolved part, as Nancy was saying, I still think that the article has too much of a criticism of unilateral action. It's my feeling that today's United Nations is an amoral body. It's a political body. I share what the selectmen had to say about the fact that one vote on the Security Council could stop any action. Sometimes, there's just the right thing to do, even if you're acting alone. And sometimes, the United States may be the only ones willing to act. I wish that that had been the case during World War II. I wish the United States, or one of the Allies, had bombed the tracks to Auschwitz. How many thousands could have been saved? Poison gas is different. I understand America's made a mess when it has been involved in wars that are based on lies, or our entry has been based on lies. We make a bad situation worse. But the use of poison gas on civilians is different historically and mechanically. Sometimes, America will be the only one to say, "We have to stop it." And I'll leave you, and I recommend no action, I'll leave you with the words of a Protestant minister who was put in a concentration camp by the Nazis for speaking out against them. And these words are on the Holocaust memorial in downtown Boston. "First they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening again. I'm still Merrilis from Precinct Six. I signed on as a lead petitioner on this article because I want to heed President Eisenhower's warning against the ever-burgeoning military-industrial complex. I signed on because I'm aware of the three evils that overshadow our nation and were identified by the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. as militarism, materialism, and racism. I signed on because of the not altogether tongue-in-cheek definition of insanity as doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. I signed on because what the United States might have done in Syria could have had uncontrollable regional or global consequences. I signed on because it seemed insane to argue that killing people with our kind of weapon was justified because it prevented their being killed by another kind of weapon. I signed on because I would never think that the U.S. use of internationally condemned weapons like white phosphorus, napalm, cluster bombs, and depleted uranium would justify any foreign nation bombing us. I signed on because I believe our nation needs to rein in its arrogant assumption that it is the moral leader and responsible police force of the world. I signed on because, in the language of Isaiah, I believe it is better to beat swords into plowshares and spears into pruning hooks, not vice versa. And I signed on because we might better spread democracy by example than by bomb. I ask you to sign on with the petitioners and approve the article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Margolis, Precinct Seven. The way that the article has been amended, it's become so anodyne that it's really pretty difficult to oppose it, but the spirit that brought it forth, while laudable, is one that I think takes too narrow a view. Let me put it to you this way. Does anyone here seriously believe that the Syrian government would have come to the table and offered to allow U.N. inspection and offered and agreed to destroy its chemical weapons had it not been for the credible threat by the United States and France of imminent military action? I do not. There are times when it is necessary to rattle the sword. After Auschwitz, after Rwanda, after Srebrenica, after Kosovo, we have learned that there are limited circumstances, and I emphasize limited, when the use of force is justified to prevent a greater evil. Now, I don't know what would have happened in Syria had we had to use military force, but I do have enough faith, at least in the current United States government, to believe that it would have been as strictly limited as possible. I think it was clear that we did not want to intervene on one side or the other, but for the limited purpose of preventing a particular type of outrage against certain human beings, namely Syrian civilians, and I think that was justified. And I agree with Mr. Gladstone, who's far more eloquent than I, that there are circumstances in which that is justified. It is the right course to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clafter.
David Clafter, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Twelve. I want to address two specific objections that have been raised to Article Seventeen. First, it's been argued that only the threat of unilateral military action led to the current negotiated agreement on the dismantling of Syria's chemical weapons. I think it can be at least as credibly argued that it was the resistance of the American people and of congressional leaders of both parties to a unilateral attack that propelled the administration, faced with a stinging political setback, to look for a negotiated settlement. I do not believe that Secretary Kerry made an unthinking casual remark that led to the beginning of negotiations. Rather, it suddenly became politically desirable for both the U.S. and Russia to find an agreement. Popular opposition to a unilateral attack was an important part of the political calculus and something that I believe we should maintain in the face of a leadership that has demonstrated an all-too-ready willingness to use military force. Without this opposition, I believe it is highly likely, in this instance, that a unilateral American attack would have occurred with unforeseeable consequences. Secondly, in the advisory committee, opposition was voiced to the whereas clause that speaks to the cost of an attack. The petitioners would stress the importance of viewing military policies as we do all other policies, with an eye to their cost. It can be argued that the core issue at the heart of our current national debt and ongoing budget deficit is the enormous portion of our discretionary spending that goes into our military budget. The Iraq War was sold on the basis that it would be quick and cheap. Hell, Iraqi oil was supposed to make it practically self-financing. Several trillion dollars later, we can see the fallacy of that argument. In his oft-quoted speech of April of 1953, President Dwight Eisenhower, who was intimately familiar with war from his distinguished military career, said, "Every gun that is made, every warship lost, launched, is in the final sense a theft from those who hunger and are not fed, from those who are cold and are not clothed. The world in arms is not spending money alone. It is spending the sweat of its laborers, the genius of its scientists, and the hopes of its children. We need to get beyond the place we are now. We're in the midst of a continued severe economic downturn. We cut food stamps because of budget restraints but are afraid to take a hard look at the military budget that takes up almost half of our discretionary spending." I would strongly argue that the immediate and potential long-range cost is an important factor to consider before deciding on the wisdom of a unilateral attack on Syria, and I urge you to please vote yes on Article Seventeen. Thank you.
On the motion on the rose-colored supplement, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a majority vote. Article Eighteen. The main motion under Article Eighteen is on page eighteen dash one, in the words of the article, again with the customary amendments that I went through with the previous under Article Seventeen. That is, in the first line, instead of to see if the town will adopt, it should read, "Moved that the town adopt." And at the end of the resolution, at the top of page eighteen dash two, strike the words or act on anything relative thereto. Moved by Mr. Richmond, seconded by Mr. Farlow. Mr. Spiegel has offered an amendment found on the pink supplement to amend the resolved clause to read that the town urges the Board of Selectmen not to increase beyond current levels the hours of operation of the general surveillance cameras, et cetera. I forgot to mention that this is a motion about opposing police surveillance cameras from the cameras from the DHS. In any case, Mr. Spiegel's motion is to change that, to ask the selectmen not to increase surveillance beyond the current levels. Is there a second to that amendment? Amendment is seconded.
Good evening. My name is Clint Richmond, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. I'd like to start with a little history on how we got here. We've been having this debate for five years. Our current situation is that the cameras are on for eight overnight hours per day. This is a compromise that we did not seek but have accepted. However, the chief and others, such as the Oversight Committee, have continued to urge for 24/7 operation. If this were not the case, we wouldn't be bringing this article. Since keeping the cameras on, keeping them always invites more hours, and we think eventually more cameras and more features, we are asking to reaffirm the resolution from 2009 to remove them. This resolution returns us to the fundamental conversation of what kind of society do we want? Part of this involves what kind of police department do we want? We oppose permanent mass surveillance in any form because we think it compromises American values of freedom and liberty. I believe that we should be able to walk down the street and not be continuously photographed by our government, just as we have for 200 years. Furthermore, I believe that we are not honoring the fundamental religious principle of the inherent worth and dignity of every person if every person is constantly under surveillance in a perpetual dragnet, waiting for them to do something wrong or suspect them of doing something wrong. Mass surveillance chills our rights to free expression and assembly, enshrined in our Constitution. Even without zooming, Brookline DHS cameras are already pointed at our doors and windows, such as at 114 St. Paul Street or 131 Cypress Street. We consider these privacy concerns, at least. They cannot see in today, but they can monitor your activities, like whether you've come home alone or what time the lights went out. Do you want to live with blackout shades all the time, the last vestige of privacy? Unfortunately, this is not an option when visiting our busy commercial spaces where the cameras are located. We have gone from a low expectation of privacy to no privacy, or what some would actually call forced exposure, under surveillance technology. I think most people are for maintaining privacy, and the government cameras are clearly reducing it. I believe our fine-upped police department can provide all due assistance to our security agencies without conducting mass surveillance. Mass surveillance is undermining our relationship to the police and militarizing our public spaces, including the various public buildings used in the networking of the cameras, such as Morse Apartments. Police officers now have security clearances, which can complicate our ability as civilians to oversee our department. One change in the last five years has been in the growth of private cameras, which are used by the police on a regular basis, and that, in our opinion, have eliminated the need for mass surveillance. Private cameras do not pose the same threats to civil liberties. A private camera at a single location does not qualify as mass surveillance. Furthermore, private video is not publicly accessible to all. Private cameras are not integrated into other government surveillance data. For example, private camera operators cannot perform mass facial recognition since they don't have access to arrest, license, or passport photos. We citizens are more able to opt out of private surveillance by simply not going to these Mass video surveillance undermines our society, our relationship with each other. It is a visible cloud of mistrust and suspicion, literally hanging over our heads in our most popular shopping areas. Mass surveillance products and technology have military origins, often funded by defense research. As the technology matures and becomes cheaper, the police market has been the next area of expansion. The security industry relentlessly promotes its products to our public safety departments. They advertise in police magazines and at conferences. Last year, the video surveillance sector racked up $3 billion in sales. The Brookline DHS cameras cost over $200,000 out of a 4.6 million total for a regional system that we're a part of, of 200 cameras in nine communities. The cameras are part of $100 million that DHS has spent in Boston since 2003, and that was as of a few years ago. The video surveillance industries have had lobbyists at the Massachusetts State House. In contrast, there is no privacy and freedom industry. We don't think the $3 million Phase Two for the cameras for evacuation was a good use of our federal taxes. The cameras do not meet cost benefit. They require staff time, are not mechanically reliable, and, on average, help in some way on only about one violent crime per year. And we have 1,000, so that's like 0.2% of those types of crimes. Together, I believe that we can continue to work towards a society and world that becomes stronger and safer by solving its ills and respecting human dignity and human rights at the same time. Please join the Jewish Alliance for Law and Social Action, the Bill of Rights Defense Committee, the Digital Fourth, and the ACLU in support of Article Eighteen. Vote yes for the freedoms that have been the key to our success of our country. In closing, I would like to add a comment about the amendment. I will vote yes on Mr. Spiegel's amendment to respond to those who would like to first vote on the current limits. At a minimum, we should not expand our current system in any way. Thank you very much.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, we have a good many speakers signed up on each side of this issue, and I will enforce time limits strictly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Kent Goldstein for the Board of Selectmen. And thank you, Mr. Moderator, also, because it was you, Mr. Moderator, who set the dignified tone for Article Sixteen. Your instructions were sensitive and authoritative, and that's why it went so well. The petitioners for Article Eighteen possess a strong political conviction to protect privacy rights. Though appreciated, that conviction goes too far in the case of Brookline's critical infrastructure monitoring system, or, in short, and as I'll refer to it here after, SIMS. You'll hear in a moment from Chief Dan O'Leary or from Patrol Officer, Town Meeting Member Casey Hatchet, who will describe to you in fine detail the ways in which SIMS has protected the inhabitants of Brookline. You will hear that the system resulted in the apprehension, arrest, and conviction of two violent criminals who abducted and raped a woman off the streets of Coolidge Corner. You will hear how the SIMS system aided in many other criminal and civil matters. You will hear how the SIMS system has aided in disaster control during major storms and in the emergency management in the wake of the Marathon bombing. You will even hear about how the SIMS system has exonerated persons falsely accused of criminal activity in the town, and that's happened twice. As I hear the petitioners' arguments, their fear is that the SIMS system is an element of an imagined altered societal structure à la 1984, in which Big Brother watches a of an imagined altered societal structure à la 1984, in which Big Brother watches our movements and reports on perceived subversive activities. Could happen, but I submit that this fear is unreasonable. It's properly safeguarded against and is minimal in comparison to the benefits which are derived. The fear is unreasonable first because cameras are aimed only at public streets, where any activities a citizen engages in could also be seen and recorded by any other of a number of other alternate means. A cop stationed in Coolidge Corner with a notebook and a still camera, or, for that matter, a pad of sketch paper, could, in essence, invade privacy to the same extent as our SIM system could. To elevate fears simply because technology has improved is unreasonable. It's the boundaries of the expected zones of privacy which are important societal barriers, not the efficiency of the technology by which public places can now be monitored. Second, the fear is unreasonable because the manpower in an infrastructure which would be required to monitor and process the information in the way imagined by the petitioners would be massive. That infrastructure does not exist, and if that fear ever could be, and if the fear is that that infrastructure could ever be implemented surreptitiously, it couldn't exist without a massive opportunity for the secret army of analysts to be revealed. Brookline has in place effective safeguards against the misuse of SIM system. Our regulations and our Oversight Committee are considered state-of-the-art. They've been a model for other communities. The ACLU, while recommending against passage of this article, commended us for the adoption of the regulations which are in place. The images obtained on our SIM system are not streamed or routinely shared with any external agencies. The images are retained for a limited period of 14 days, possibly against the requirements of our laws regarding retention of government documents. And after that, they're permanently deleted unless a purpose can be shown to retain them. The uses of the system are carefully logged. Alerts are sent to a diverse group of citizen watchdogs when the system is turned on outside of the normal operating hours. And, most importantly, no misuses of the system have ever been reported. Finally, as the chief reports, the benefits of the system are easily identified and well documented. This perception is not just my own or just the Board of Selectmen's. Whenever this issue has come up, I hear almost exclusively support from the average citizens of this town. People who are far removed from us on issues of parking and budget and even school enrollment care very greatly about this issue. By a wide margin, they feel that the risks far outweigh, that the risks are far outweighed by the benefits.
Thirty seconds, sorry.
I'm finishing up right now. The Board of Selectmen unanimously urges no action or warrant to Article 18 because they are aware that we live in a world where, with risks, that public camera surveillance is a ready tool by which to minimize those risks, and that the SIM system as currently configured does not intrude into expected zones of privacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wunsch.
Sarah Wunsch, I live in Precinct 4. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and members of Town Meeting. I'm here as a proponent of Article 18. I'm going to ask you, for those who do care about the nature of the society in which we live, one which we have thought of as a free society where our government and the police do not watch us and follow us at all times, for those of you who care about that, I'm going to actually ask you to support the amendment, the motion to amend, because I think my arguments are the same for what Article 18 or the motion to amend. If you care about maintaining a free society, I think it's very important to send a message, and I disagree with John Van Skoyeck's comments earlier about what's the point of sending messages. We do need to send a message. You are a voice for the community. Both the amendment, the motion to amend, which would say, leave things as they are, 11 cameras which are only on from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., the resolution urges that that be maintained and that there shall not be an expansion of the government surveilling us without a much more substantial case for it being made, and that we want to maintain the free society that we think that we live in. Opposition to the expanded use of the cameras, as the chief has asked for, and that is why Article 18 was submitted, may be the best, this may be the best way for Town Meeting to express that view. And I want to say, the view should be, there is no real evidence that the routine use of permanent police surveillance cameras makes us safer, or evidence, there is no evidence that they prevent crime or terrorism, or even help fix our gridlocked intersections. We need to say loudly and clearly, as a community, that we are concerned about the direction our government is going. And this is not a figment of our imaginations. If you read the newspaper, you have seen the revelations, which should actually be no surprise to anybody, about the NSA surveilling us, knowing about our emails, our phone calls. This is not our imagination at work, okay? These are realities, and we need to not stick our heads in the sand. I think because of those revelations and because of the request to increase the surveillance in our own community, this is a crucial time for Town Meeting to speak out. And I want to make very clear, Article 18, or the motion to amend Article 18, only deal with the 11 Department of Homeland Security-supplied cameras. It does not prevent cameras to be used by the police in sensitive locations. It doesn't prevent cameras from being used on temporary bases during major events. It doesn't prevent cameras from being used in locations where there are hotspots of crime, and we need to figure out who's doing that. So this Article 18, or the proposed amendment to Article 18, do not tie the hands of our police department. And I want to say, in 2009, when this Town Meeting voted by a very large majority to send the message to the selectmen that we did not want these 11 cameras, at the time it was 12, turned on, the selectmen ignored that, and the cameras did go on. But I think there was an effect, that the discussion here had an effect, which meant that there was a limit placed on the use of those cameras. They would only be on from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. So I think what this body says and discusses does have an important effect. If we turn away from that and allow this expansion to take place, you will see, with no doubt, you know, at the time, we predicted that there would be requests to expand the use of cameras back in 2009, and now we are seeing that. Now, you will hear, I think, from the chief and others, that these cameras really aren't all that great, so you don't need to worry about it. That's wrong. Technology is developing at a rapid rate, facial recognition technology, tracking technology, they're here. And if we fail to send the message of what kind of society we want to live in, we will see requests for more and more cameras. Now, I know there's a comment going around, oh, well, there's so many private cameras, what's the difference, or isn't it better to have them be government cameras? The answer to that is no. Private cameras are not linked, they are not networked to the databases that we see the government creating.
Thirty seconds.
The right to be walking about our streets is not exactly a right, free from being watched by our government, is not exactly a right to privacy. But in a free society, we have always recognized there is a right to some anonymity, to not be followed and watched by the police in a free society. I ask you to support either the motion to amend and vote in favor of at least not expanding the use of the police, the permanent police surveillance cameras in Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wunsch. And, Mr. Gladstone, I suggest you take a seat. We're going to hear from several other speakers before we get to questions.
I was just going to ask if the chief is among the, is on the list of speakers.
He is not.
So my question will be to the chief when I get a chance.
Eventually. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Karen Wunsch, I'm a Precinct 11 Town Meeting Member, and I'm speaking for the Advisory Committee. Warren in Article 18 is a resolution urging the Board of Selectmen to order the removal of the town-operated police surveillance cameras funded by the Department of Homeland Security. Now, we met this evening about Mr. Spiegel's amendment, and we are, the committee discussed it, and we're staying with our original recommendation found on page 1810. Just a little bit more background, this was a handout from last night, it's very useful in terms of a lot of background, especially the list in the back, on the back page of the 11 cameras, their locations, and their directions that they're pointed. In January 2009, the Board of Selectmen accepted a Department of Homeland Security grant to fund the cameras and voted to allow the installation and 24-hour operation of police department-supervised surveillance cameras for a one-year trial, period, for the purpose of aiding in evacuations from Boston. The Board established a camera oversight committee made up of four Brookline residents, and they report twice a year to the Board. The spring 2009 Town Meeting voted by a strong majority to pass Article 25, which opposed the use of the surveillance cameras. In September of that year, the selectmen voted to reduce the operation of the camera system to the hours of 1:00 p.m. to 6:00, from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., with special exemptions for other times. The police department operates and fully controls the 11-camera DHS-funded surveillance system in Brookline. The cameras are in a fixed location, point in one direction, and are clearly identified with signage. There are monitors located near the entrance of the Public Safety Building on Washington Street that display the camera images and are in clear view for the public. As Mr. Goldstein pointed out, the police department stores the images for a period of no longer than 14 days, unless the footage is needed for an investigation, in which case, a copy of the footage is stored, and we learned that there is a state statute that may require us to hold the footage for longer than the 14-day period. Proponents of the Warren article state that their concern over unjustified surveillance as residents frequent public spaces and the creation of a government infrastructure possibly permanent for surveillance of the law-abiding public. Camera opponents point out that the cameras provide digital images available to anyone who makes a request under the state's public records law or to government agencies. With respect to privacy concerns, the Advisory Committee discussed the preponderance of private cameras and the lack of oversight of them compared to the town's DHS cameras. It's interesting, as I walked into the building last night, you probably noticed that sign, and there was a class about enhancing your iPhone's cameras. So the use of EZ Pass chips and credit cards, GPS, Google, and Facebook point not only to the inevitable loss of privacy, but to the threat to privacy these entities pose. About the concern over making requests for images under the state public records law, over the four years the cameras have been in use, only one request has been made. Surveillance camera opponents have also mentioned facial recognition capacity of the cameras. Just for clarity's sake, cameras do not possess facial recognition capacity. It's the database systems that provide that capacity. And I have a friend who's a pattern recognition specialist, and he was mentioning to me how, in order for you to get a useful image, you'd have to have someone looking directly at the camera and under just the right amount of light. So it's not that feasible at this time for there to be any useful recognition data.
One minute.
Okay. Supporters of the article also commented on the use of cameras has strayed from the original purpose of evacuations. Chief O'Leary has stated that the original purpose still exists, that of public safety, and there have been many crimes, there have been crimes that have been solved because of the use of the cameras. Also, the chief has observed that during the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., there's not a whole lot of foot traffic, there's a much more vehicular traffic, and the cameras have been useful in investigations, particularly DUI. He mentioned a particularly notorious incident where there was a car that made a left onto Beacon Street.
Thirty seconds.
Onto the subway tracks. So I just, compared to four years ago, there's been a sea change in terms of constituents and town meeting members' support of the cameras. In fact, at the public hearings four years ago, the vast majority, overwhelming majority of people attending the hearings were opposing the cameras, and this year, the majority supported the cameras, and that, most of them supported 24-hour use. So the advisory committee recommends by a vote of 15, three, 15, three, and one abstention, no action in Article 18.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen, there.
Sorry. Just a few exhibit. I don't have any cartoons. Marty Rosen's on Precinct 9 and co-chair Brookline PACs. I'm going to speak kind of quickly to try to stay within my five minutes. To paraphrase, "Eleventh score, and seventeen years ago, our fathers brought forth a new nation conceived in liberty. It is for us the living to resolve that this nation shall have a new birth of freedom." This is a week for waxing historically, so forgive me if I do a little bit of that. But parenthetically, I may have been the first critic of these cameras. I think it's 2007 that I was about to march in the Flag Day parade when all the selectmen were elsewhere, and Rich Kelleher asked me, as a has-been, if I would help carry the selectmen's banner. And I did so. And as we walked by KI, he said, "See those cameras up there? What would you think if we had public cameras?" And I said, "Well, I've had to become a public person, which I don't want to be, but I'm someone who blocks caller ID, and I would be against it." So I don't know if anyone else preceded me, but I have a good history on this. I want to just emphasize a few things. It's been argued that Brookline is not the NSA. Well, and Mr. Pollenbaum, who I think is probably going to speak, has called PACs' letter a wee bit hyperbolic when we said that cameras do the bidding of Homeland Security, including the NSA, FBI, et cetera. By the way, that was an editing error, it was supposed to say, and no doubt soon, the NSA, FBI, et cetera. But the more important point is, does anybody really believe that this data will not, in the near future, be readily accessible to the state or the feds, of all kinds of feds? The technology explosion is really hard to exaggerate what's going on with technology. The selectmen have admitted, too, that the sharing of the data by outside jurisdictions has to be approved, but it's clearly easy to share this data. It's almost, I started practicing law before there were fax machines. I know I don't look that old, but look at what's happened in the last couple of decades. President Obama last week, and today he gave out Freedom Medals, by the way, last week said about intelligence gathering, the technology and the budgets and the capacity have outstripped the constraints. A fellow Town Meeting Member from my precinct and friend of mine, Dwayne Tindall, said to me today, "The battle of the 21st century will be for privacy, not against terrorism," and I would say not against street crime. The New York Times and Washington Post have something astonishing almost every day. Lately, it's been about NSA, but also about intelligence gathering and snooping in general. My favorite recently pertinent to this, from the Washington Post in June 16th, was, "State photo ID databases become troves for police," starting with this sentence, "The faces of more than 120 million people are in searchable photo databases that increasingly are used by police to identify suspects and even innocent bystanders in a wide range of criminal investigations." This is just the last two weeks of clippings that I've made from the New York Times. I'm not going to have time to tell you any of the headlines. Next point is that we have been enticed by exaggerated safety benefits, which both downplay the proven utility of private cameras and exaggerate the benefits of public cameras. Someone has said, "Crimes have been prevented since repeat crimes by these perpetrators were stopped." I would say that's an exaggeration, especially quantitatively, but aside from that, it dishonors the founders of our country and their approach to the Bill of Rights. They prioritize liberty over safety and distrusted government. So what are the trade-offs here? I'll concede that it's not about rights, because our rights are only where five people on the Supreme Court want them to be, and right now, that's not much. What it is about is civility and respect for the privacy expectations and desires of many of us. The New York Times ethicist had a question recently, "Isn't the golden rule in our diverse world, shouldn't it read, 'One should treat others as they want to be treated'?" His answer, your proposed solution seems better, but how do you know what someone else desires? Well, here you know, some of us don't want to be watched. Well, here you know, some of us don’t wanna be watched. In closing, I cite another Brookline native, a little older and passed away than myself, “The men who create power make an indispensable contribution to the nation’s greatness, but the men who question power make a contribution just as indispensable. We shall pay,” this is a separate quote, “We shall pay any price, bear any burden, meet any hardship to assure the survival and success of liberty.”
Please conclude, Mr. Rosenfeld.
I’ll conclude by saying that we have gone from conceived in liberty to overly conceding to fear.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. And Ms. Hummel, will you please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stanley Spiegel from Precinct 2. I offer this amendment to give town meeting members a chance to affirmatively vote to preserve the status quo. I did so, well, let me back for a second, when the advisory committee took this up and they did vote not to reconsider their prior vote, there was a lot of discussion about, “Let’s have it one way or the other.” This is an illogical way to split the difference, there’s no logic behind it. I disagree. I don’t think that we need to have one way or the other, either no cameras or cameras on all the time, no virtue and up or down vote on this, and the reason, for two reasons. There are people of goodwill on both sides and there’s virtue on both sides. It’s not wrong to desire whatever extra security and safety the cameras can offer. It’s not wrong to be wary of the extra intrusiveness, governmental intrusiveness, that the cameras can provide. Both sides have some virtue and there’s logic in both and reason for both arguments to have, they have merit. So, in a situation like this, I believe it does make sense to say, “Hey, let’s try to have what the cameras on at a time when their usefulness would be most needed,” and this, to me, this is in the dark hours. In fact, if I had my druggers, I’d like them on from dusk to dawn, go on with the streetlights and go off when the sun comes up in the morning. That’s not before us tonight, because it would be beyond the scope. But in any event, during the daylight hours, they’re less needed, not entirely unnecessary, but less needed. In the nighttime hours, they’re more needed, maybe not the answer to public safety, but more needed, more necessary, more potentially useful. So, I do see a virtue in the status quo, which is what my amendment asked for. And again, my own sense would be to expand it slightly so that it’s on during the dark hours where people are most concerned about muggings and so on. In any case, I thought town meetings should have the opportunity to vote something resembling what my preference would be, namely maintaining the status quo. We’ve lived with it for some years now, it seems not to have raised too many hackles on too many sides, it seems a reasonable course to preserve, and I think it would be reasonable for us to recommend that the selectmen maintain this or something quite similar to it without going to either extreme of 24/7 on or zero on, and that’s why the amendment is before you. I would urge folks to adopt it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. And Ms. Hatchett, would you please come forward?
Amy Hummel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12. So, these cameras don’t make you really any more safe, but what they do do is infringe on our civil liberties, to come and go freely, unwatched by our government, because we’ve done nothing wrong. No one is asking to be invisible in public, but there is a big difference between being out there, being seen by those who may reasonably, who you may reasonably see back, and being recorded with a government camera with a bird’s eye view. Digital images from the camera, as grainy as they may seem, can have facial recognition software applied to it or be used in any number of other ways after it’s collected. We know already that Boston collects images and identifies peaceful demonstrators, it’s chilling. We do have a policy to be proud of in Brookline, but it is not fail-safe. There are a wide range of exceptions for turning the cameras on during the day, many of which seem unnecessary, and Brookline footage sent elsewhere, for whatever reason, is out of our control forever. Our camera footage is a public record, available to almost anyone who requests it, and the cameras are also configured for linkage to other departments who may view us live, such as Boston. It’s a feature that’s occasionally enabled and our policy is irrelevant beyond our own town borders. So, state and federal law may trump our camera policies at some point anyway and others may call the shots. You’ve already heard that state law may require us to keep the camera footage for a minimum of 30 days. We’re proud right now to be out of compliance, but how long will that last and what will go next? At some point, it may not be up to the chief or the selectmen, and even now, the selectmen don’t have the security clearances to know everything that goes on with the camera footage. Everyone respects the chief, but it’s a bad idea to base our policies on one person or rely on an oversight committee of people who meet about twice a year, well-meaning as they may be. We can support our police department and still say no to them. This isn’t an anti-police or an anti-public safety warrant article. They are perfectly capable without the cameras, though there are cameras that they are able to use in hotspots. You’ve heard of these two, these mobile cameras, as well as the automatic license plate reader or something slightly different, but they have these available. And, you know, they aren’t usually on or moved around a whole lot. One reason is crime is so low in Brookline anyway. There was one placed in North Brookline during the crime spree last winter, it was not helpful. Which brings me to another significant point, cameras are not a magic safety bullet. This is a fact that’s been borne out in multiple studies, both here and in the UK, where they have an average of one camera for every 14 people and their residents show up on footage about 300 times a day. They still have plenty of crime. Meta-analysis of studies over the last decade, both here and in the UK, tell us that cameras can’t be attributed to reducing crime. There are exceptions in some high-risk areas permeated with cameras, with officers constantly monitoring live feeds in real time, but even the effects sometimes in those areas are short-lived. Overall, the data shows that there’s no long, clear, long-term difference, particularly in low-crime communities like ours. So, even if you don’t, even if you don’t mind the cameras, even if they do provide a sense of security, false as it may be, you’re not just undermining your right to privacy if you decide to leave them on or decide to leave them on full-time. You’re making that trade-off for everyone. So, this is supposed to be a balance between safety and privacy right concerns, and simply discussing it while parsing individual local crimes, which serve to make people nervous, and then deciding that watching everyone in the community all the time is okay, is not a balance. You may say, “Well, there are only a few cameras along major routes,” but we have added the automatic license plate reader and I expect, when the dust from this warrant article settles, or we feel vulnerable again, or we’re offered more free or cheap cameras, the number will grow and their capabilities certainly will. Civil liberties are always at risk, because they aren’t often about what’s popular or what’s easy, but they are about what is capital R, right. If this amendment is all we can walk away with tonight, so be it. The cameras should come down, but they certainly shouldn’t be on 24/7. At their most basic, they don’t make us safer, and in the big picture, they do undermine our ideals and I think our humanity.
Thank you. Ms. Hatchett?
Casey Hatchett, Precinct 12. I’m speaking tonight in opposition to Article 18, and as many of you know, I’ve been a longtime supporter of the cameras, not just because I’m a Brookline police officer, because I’m also the mother of four small children, who values these cameras as an important public safety tool. These 11 cameras posted in major public intersections were initially installed for the use in an evacuation. That purpose and the potential needs still exist today. There are many auxiliary uses as well, which have been cited, and we have heard time and time again from Chief O’Leary, that there are many examples of the effectiveness of these cameras in investigating crimes, apprehending criminals, taking repeat offenders off our streets, exonerating the innocent, determining fault in traffic crashes, managing events and storms, and yes, now investigating terrorism. It is true that crime has not been lower in Brookline than we’ve seen in 20 years. It is also true that seven months ago, two terrorists attacked our city. The Brookline Police Department does not need to play into the fear of our residents to gather support for these cameras. For many, following the Boston Marathon bombings, that fear became a reality. We are no longer watching terrorism through a telescope on the six o’clock news, we are living it here at home. As both a runner and an emergency responder on April 15th, I can vividly remember the faces of my fellow runners, neighbors, coworkers, and even my own children, as the reality of our new world set in. Later that week, I listened to the radio as my brother officers were under attack in Watertown, and when dawn arrived that Friday morning, I patrolled the empty streets of our community as we were in lockdown. It was a chilling sight that I hope I never see again in my lifetime. Cameras, albeit private in this case, solved these horrific bombings. Public or private, the doubt as to the effectiveness of this technology, in my view, no longer exists. As the Brookline Police Department’s Crime Analyst, I’ve been fortunate to be part of the ongoing discussion, review and analysis of the cameras used in Brookline, and to serve as a department’s liaison to the camera oversight committee. Through the analysis I have conducted, I can tell you with complete honesty and sincerity that the petitioners’ claim that our cameras have not been effective is simply not true. The cameras were instrumental in solving a horrific rape and kidnapping in Coolidge Corner with two rapists pleading to a 20-year sentence. They have been effective in identifying suspects in violent crimes. They have helped determine fault in traffic crashes, saving thousands of dollars in insurance premiums for people who would otherwise have been falsely held responsible. They have been activated during searches for missing children and for missing elderly, and they have helped manage large-scale events like the Boston Marathon, Hurricane Sandy and Blizzard Nemo. The petitioners have claimed that these cameras have been minimally useful in solving only insignificant and minor traffic crashes. The facts dispute that claim, and if you were the victim in any number of these many incidents, I’m certain you wouldn’t feel they were particularly insignificant. What we do know is that 85% of the incidents occurring within the limited scope of these cameras are occurring while the cameras are off. Today, at 2:30 in the afternoon, there was a robbery of a bank at 287 Harvard Street in the heart of Coolidge Corner, an armed robbery, gunpoint. Much of the discussion around these cameras has been philosophical, surrounding the intrusion into our personal privacy. This philosophical debate, however, seems to lose sight of the very important fact that our democracy and our freedoms are maintained and protected in large part by the men and women of our police department. These cameras do not replace community policing, nor do they replace the BEACOP. These cameras are not used to spy on residents or to track citizens. They are a tool for law enforcement to better protect our community, to respond quickly to dangerous situations, to solve crimes, to quickly entertain repeat offenders off our streets. They are one of many tools, and in the five years of operation, there has not been one single instance that has been documented or even alleged of misuse in their use, of abuse in their use. These cameras are highly governed by policy and the camera oversight committee ensures proper checks and balances. The cameras are even on display in the lobby of the Public Safety Headquarters to ensure transparency, and I would argue there is no single public camera system in this country that is more strictly regulated than the 11 we have here in Brookline. These 11 cameras, which have been labeled by the petitioners as mass surveillance, cover less than one-tenth of 1% of Brookline’s 6.82 square miles. Granted, yes, they are also posted in some of our busiest intersections, they are in areas where crime and crashes occur at the greatest frequency. Working under the D-DAX model, a data-driven approach to crime and traffic safety, communities are encouraged to concentrate their efforts in areas where the most significant impacts can be made to reduce crime, decrease crashes, improve safety, and advance the quality of life for people who live, work or visit in the community. These cameras are good public policy from an efficiency standpoint. I hope that you have reviewed the police department report that has been provided and that you will use it to make an informed decision as to the value of these cameras. Let’s not rely on studies from overseas or outdated research or comparisons to unlike systems, but consider how our cameras have worked in Brookline, how valuable they are in Brookline, and whether or not they’ve been effective in helping us prevent, solve crimes in Brookline. I’ve spoken extensively with residents to get a sense of how they feel about the cameras, and I even sent out an online survey with one question.
Thirty seconds.
I had 163 responses to my survey. 6% want to see them removed from use in support of this article, 3% want to see the cameras remain on the current limited use, and 90% responded that they would like to see the cameras moved to full-time operation. Tonight, we will vote for what is best for our community and the balance between civil liberties and safety, and I suggest to you, the two are not in opposition. As for a great many, safety within a community is what fosters true freedom. I urge you to vote no on warrant Article 18 and the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Mr. Pollenbaum, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Bassett, Precinct 6. I urge you to vote yes on the Spiegel amendment, and if that fails, then to vote yes on Article 18. My wife and I love animals. On a cold desert night, we would want the whole camel in the tent, not just the camel’s nose, but we don’t want the camel in the tent. This is an article that is not just about facts, there are facts all over the place. It must be true that in some cases, including serious crimes, the cameras have helped. It is also true that cameras have not helped police for very long and that there were other ways of solving crimes before the cameras came. It is certainly true there are studies showing that cameras have not reduced crime rates in other places where they have been liberally used. This is a resolution, it is also and primarily about feelings. If you like, if you approve of the current trend, and there is a trend, not just nationally, but there is a trend in Brookline. It starts with two mobile cameras, then we had 12 or 11, because one is in Boston, I think, of the stationary Department of Homeland Security cameras. We have the automated license plate reader that does, can do 1,000 photos a minute. We have cameras in public housing, we have cameras in our schools, we have cameras in the library, in the libraries. There’s a proposal now to increase the 11 cameras to 24/7. So, this is the direction. The amendment and the article simply offer us a chance to pause, to say, “Slow down or stop here. I urge you,” again, I say, “Camels, yes, cameras, no. Please support the amendment, and if that fails, please support Article 18. Thank you.
Mr. Pollenbaum.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Ian Pollenbaum, Precinct 6, I’m on the camera committee, and I also have a, I had a recent and disastrous career as a yoga instructor, because when I considered the issue here and when I heard the rhetoric heat up, and when I saw the PACs letter, the phrase that Marty said that really got me wasn’t just doing the bidding, but the menace to a free society part. And then I sent the email out that you all saw that said, “Take a deep breath,” and some people hyperventilated instead. But it is serious. It’s serious because it’s a public safety policy issue and it has to be based not just on feelings and conjecture, but on the evidence. It’s also serious because people have real and legitimate concerns. There is plenty to fear about government intrusion, especially the most secretive and invasive kinds, the ones that really get to our private activities and communications, and I have never disrespected or disparaged those feelings. My father was subject to FBI inept attempts to track him and compile a dossier full of wrong information based on his political activities. I get it, I just don’t think the cameras are a good fit here. And so, I think it’s a little sad that when people point out what these cameras actually do and don’t, and how they’re run and how they’re regulated, the response from some has been just to ratchet up the fear. It’s ironic, because there are accusations of fear-mongering on both sides, but there’s a lot of fear behind this article. When it’s pointed out that the cameras not only are not used to track individuals, but that it is simply not feasible, go look at the screens in the police department and see if those can be used to follow somebody around town. And yet, we hear, “Tracking, tracking, tracking, follow us and watch us,” and then the letter we got today, they help spy on us and our stuff. When it’s pointed out that this video footage is kept, controlled, maintained, access-controlled, and eventually purged unless it’s used for an investigation on-site across up the street at the Brookline PD, and it’s not streamed to any spy center somewhere, the response is just to repeat, “Databanks, databases, perpetual dragnets, mass surveillance, mass surveillance, mass surveillance,” and a suggestion that it might be linked to your EZ Pass records, which is particularly thought-provoking, I’ll call it, because, I mean, I’m a prosecutor, if I want your EZ Pass records, I can get them, but I need a court order. Can the Fed- Can the feds grab them some other way that we don't even know about? Maybe they can. But do you think restricting these cameras in town is going to have any effect on that whatsoever? Here's what the cameras do. When they're on, they record certain view of 11 intersections. If something happens there or nearby that warrants investigation, the police can go back and look at the footage and see if the camera shows anything useful, and of course, that only works when they're on, which is why there's a long list of missed incidents where they might have helped, that's in the materials you've gotten. If there's something useful, it's taken and saved and used for an investigation. Something useful, as you've heard, takes many forms, so I'm not going to use up time listing them again. If there's no specific reason to keep them, they're purged currently after 14 days, that could change to 30, but that's not before us tonight. I urged people to read that Selectmen Special Order that controls the cameras, and nobody took me up on the offer to send them a copy, and I can only hope that's because everybody who needs to read it has before voting on this article. I hope that people have also looked at the Brookline Police Department reports of incidents, the types of things that the footage is actually requested and used for, and that gigantic, colossal statistic of zero, which is the number of abuses or misuses that have even been alleged, let alone documented. And the response again is, "Well, so what? Who knows what they're doing? They have drones, they can read our emails, they can listen to our calls, they can get into what we're thinking and who we associate with," and that's... Yes, they can. But do you think restricting these cameras and how they're used will stop or even slow any of that? If the only practical effect here, if the article passes and the Selectmen heed it in whatever form, if the only practical effect of that would be to take a useful tool away from our local police to say, "Technology's advancing like crazy, but let's leave local law enforcement behind. Let the corporations do what they want, but leave the local police department behind," then you have to ask yourselves, the only benefit is making some kind of statement, and before you think about making that some kind of statement, consider the feedback from your constituents. Consider whether people out there beyond the bubble that we're in here in town meeting, whether they're all feeling upset, violated, and defensive, and tracked, and monitored by these cameras. That's not what our constituents are saying. They're not saying that these cameras erode trust in law enforcement when they're used responsibly and under strict guidelines. So, there's nothing wrong with ideology. I have it, everybody else has it, it shapes how we think, what we do.
Please conclude, sir.
But if ideology trumps not only the factual record, but also what people in town want, then I suggest it makes for bad public policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's have Mr. Gladstone's question, and then I'll entertain that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Pollenbaum.
Chief O'Leary, I'd suggest you come forward.
Scott Gladstone, Precinct 16. I'd like to, Scott Gladstone, Precinct 16, I'd like to ask if the chief could address simply the question, since the last time we discussed this issue, what have been some of the highlights of use for this camera, where crimes have been solved, or any, you know, why have you found it useful? There are the numbers in the packet, but if you just give us some vignettes as to, you know, that's emblematic of why you feel like they should be here, or even increased.
Chief O'Leary, I think you've heard a good deal of that from Ms. Hatchett, but go ahead, chief.
Good evening. Dan O'Leary, the Chief of Police. I think I'll use a couple of examples that come off the top of my head. Up in Coolidge Corner, our cameras are on, as you've heard, 10 o'clock at night. In Coolidge Corner, after midnight, a lot of the traffic that you see is vehicular, it is not pedestrian. We have had a number of occasions where we have seen cars come down Harvard Street, turn left against the illegal left turn onto Beacon Street, and operate down the trolley tracks. Those people that come down the trolley tracks get stuck. When our officers respond, is probably a very good explanation that person has had too much to drink, and they're confronted with that evidence. Now, these people are removed from the roadway, making the roadway safer, and their lawyers and the district attorneys know the following day that that's not just something that's made up, that it is on film, that it can be used in part of the prosecution. We've heard a lot of talk today about crime, and what has it done to our crime rate. On our website, we show where our crime has been since 1994, and I point out that on the last five or six years, it's been the lowest it's ever been. This year is even lower. This year, we're 9% on our party crimes lower, and there's a whole lot of reasons for that. Cameras, public and private, being one of them. You heard talk about the rape and abduction that occurred just after the 2009 town meeting. That was, we were put on the right track, we were on to the subjects that were involved in that almost immediately based on the camera. And I'll tell you what the cameras did. The camera at Harvard and Beacon saw the victim step out of a cab, talk to the cab driver, saw a red pickup truck pull up beside and stop at the red light on Beacon at Harvard, then saw the lady walk across the street. She went to the bank because the cab did not accept credit cards. Shows a truck pulling down Harvard Street. Shortly thereafter, the truck comes back as she's walking across to pay the cab driver. Then she goes out of sight, walking towards Carmav on Harvard Street. Right after that, the truck goes by again. She's jumped, beaten, and taken into the cab, taken into the truck at the intersection of Fuller Street. And then we don't know what she, we know what she went through over the next hour and a half. The next day, we got that video, we enhanced it, the picture, we took the picture to a lot of car dealerships on Route 1, into car repair shops up in Brighton. We were able to see through that photo the exact year, make, model, and the fact that the driver's door was a replacement door, because the colors didn't match. Within 24 hours, we're in the driver, that guy's house in Brighton, had him under arrest. Within 48 hours after that, we had a second subject, and they did both plead to more than 20 years in jail, based on the evidence that we were building that all started from that camera. And that's a fact. Furthermore, what it's done is reduced a lot of fear of crime, because we have a lot of times when people report crimes to us that really do not occur. And I want to give two examples, because they're in high-trafficed areas around town. One of them in Brookline Village, at 9:30 in the morning, where we have a lot of pedestrian traffic, a lot of our citizens walk around or they sit on benches down there. Where we had a subject claim that he came out of court, walked down Brookline Village, was set upon by two individuals, and robbed. We went to the camera that's located on the fire station at Route 9 and High Street. We were able to see that kid walk down Washington Street, come out, go to exactly where he said, but you know what? All he did was stand against a building and light a cigarette. He had a cigarette and he walked away. That never happened. Now imagine if we put out in the public view that we were looking for two subjects at 9:30 in the morning committing an armed robbery in Brookline Village. That didn't happen. More recently, we had three armed robberies, a series of armed robberies, including a stabbing in North Brookline. We solved all of those cases, all solved through cameras. Not our cameras, because they did not come towards Beacon Street, they went towards Carmav, but through public cameras and the transit police cameras were able to solve them, bring all those subjects into custody. But shortly after that, we did a community meeting in North Brookline, attended to well over 100 people. I've never been to a community meeting in this town that had that many well-attended, and we talked about one subject, violent crime in North Brookline. We were able to tell all those people there what we did, how we did it, and what it solved. Not long after that, I got an email about 10:30 in the morning from a resident of North Brookline, wanting to know what was going on. A friend of the family reported, a friend of hers reported to this lady that the boyfriend of their daughter left the house at 1 o'clock in the morning, went up to Coolidge Corner, and was assaulted and robbed by three individuals who fled down Longwood Ave. These three individuals went out of sight, a Brookline police cruiser came up, this man flagged them down, gave the description to the Brookline police cruiser, the cruiser went down Longwood Ave in pursuit of the subjects, and never returned. A police car never came to talk to that subject, the alleged victim at Beacon and Harvard Street. At 10:30 in the morning, I went to our computer and I looked at to see what was going on. There was no report of a crime. I went down the hall to the detectives and I said, "I want this looked at. I don't know what's going on here, but this is alleged to have happened." We went to the cameras, and we saw what happened. Then we went to the family that had reported this, and we were able to track down the alleged victim. But we got him into the station all right, and he started to tell us a story about his robbery, and then we simply said to him, "Let's go look at the video that we have from the camera there." Because that video showed him walking at 1 o'clock at night, 1:20 at night, by the bank at Beacon and Harvard, sitting on the bench, being accosted by absolutely no one. No cruiser going by, and then him walking out of sight. You know what he did? He got in a fight with his girlfriend, and he wanted to get back in her good graces. So he said that he was a victim of a robbery, and he put this entire, he could have put the entire North Brookline back in a state of fear.
Well, chief, I appreciate these anecdotes, and they're very interesting, but I think we've had enough of a sense of how the cameras have helped the Police Department, and perhaps an adequate response to Mr. Gladstone's question. I have said that I take the motion for the question. Is there someone who wishes to move the question? Is there a second? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to terminate debate. I have the following person signed up to speak in favor of the main motion, Mr. Fisher and Ms. Vanderzeel, and Jesse Rosman, who's a non-resident. I have the following people signed up to speak against the main motion, Mr. Jones, Mr. Burstein, and Mr. Levine. On the motion for the question, which requires a 2/3 vote, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by 2/3 vote. We'll deal first with Mr. Spiegel's amendment, which would maintain all of the resolved clauses of the main motion, but substitute for the last clause, now therefore be it resolved, that the town meeting urged the Selectmen not to increase beyond current levels the hours of operation, et cetera. Yes, Mr. Richmond?
I would like to request a recorded vote.
A recorded vote on Mr. Spiegel's amendment?
Yes.
Okay, if there are 35 town meeting members who wish a recorded vote, we will have And as has become our want, there are. This is Article 18, Spiegel Amendment. S-P-I-E-G-E-L.
Have a question, Mr. Moderator? Procedural?
Yes, Mr. Gladstone.
Scott Gladstone, Precinct 16. So if the Spiegel Amendment gets approved, is that the end of the vote?
No. We will then vote on the main motion as amended by the Spiegel Amendment. If the Spiegel Amendment fails, we'll vote on the main motion intact. Okay. On the Spiegel Amendment, all those in favor of the amendment, which is on page 1 of the pink supplement, please stand and press 1. Thank you. You may be seated. Those opposed, please stand and press 2. Mr. Spiegel's amendment passes by a vote of 122 to 73 with 5 abstentions. On the main motion, on page 18-1, Mr. Carroll?
I'd like to request a recorded vote.
If you wish a recorded vote, please stand, and we'll have one. We'll have a recorded vote. On the, this is Article 18, main motion. You're voting on the motion on page 18-1 as amended by the Spiegel Amendment. Those in favor of the amended motion, please stand and press 1. Those opposed, please stand and press 2. Motion carries by a vote of 122 to 86, 113 to 86 with 4 abstentions. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our business. Under this warrant, I commend you the reports included under Article 19 of the Climate Action Committee and the Moderators Committee on Parking, and I will take a motion to dissolve the town meeting. Is there a second? Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Please remember to turn in your handheld devices.